Everyone, it is Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. It is 6:30, and you are at a common council of the City of Wausau meeting. Welcome, everyone. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
(Inaudible)
The next item is roll call. We're going to be doing this manually because we have folks on WebEx and folks in the chamber. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Here.
Killian?
Here.
Neil?
Here.
Wadenski?
Here.
McElaney?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Herbst?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Eleven members present. Awesome, thank you very much. Next item is proclamations. I will just make you aware that we have World Migratory Bird Day in our packet, but it isn't until May 21st, so I might save reading the whole thing until then, but it is official. The next item on our agenda will be Alder Tom Killian, who's Chair of our Liberation and Freedom Committee, will start us off with the Liberation and Freedom Committee regarding the 2022 priorities and potential strategies for implementation. And I want to note that we have folks on WebEx joining us from the committee as well.
Yes, thank you. And I'll just go into a little background on the committee and why we put together the committee report in your packet and as well as this associated presentation. So, as some of you know and some of the public knows, the committee was started in 2019 as the Mayor's Welcoming and Inclusivity Committee, and since then, there's been multiple changes, including a name change, as well as some changes in committee membership, as well as changes in chairs. So, there's been a multitude of changes as things unfolded with the committee. And for some background, when the last chair stepped down, due to the formality of kind of the founding resolution of the committee, that I was automatically then placed in the chair position as I was the council member appointed to it. So, the committee wanted to provide the council with this committee report and presentation to start early on in the process, giving the council indication of what the objectives, desires are of the committee, as well as possible implementation, so that the council can be involved early on rather than later. And also, I think the committee did not want to put in extensive planning on some of these things if they were not supported by or received well by the council. And I'll note that the founding resolution lays out kind of explicitly the parameters of the committee and what committee business is supposed to revolve around and what our mandate is. So, in the report, that report is comprised of committee members' input and contributions during some earlier Liberation and Freedom Committee discussions. And I thought it would be more engaging than reading a PDF or throwing up PowerPoint slides if we played a brief video of those comments and discussions. It's just a little over two minutes, so that you can see the origin of some of these priorities and suggestions. Following that, we have a couple of committee members who'd like to inject some comments into the presentation. Thank you.
Having different representatives from community come in and have little bodies of community speak for themselves about what they want, and I think this would probably be also a good way to, like I said, reintroduce this body to the community.
I think before we can start setting objectives and goals and doing what we think the people want and they need, I think we should have some different voices coming in here.
I believe that we, as a committee, need to find ways to become more involved or make the community more involved, so we all can find those barriers.
Another thing I do see that we have an issue with is communication. A lot of the reports, a lot of the minutes are in English. A lot of my elders can't speak or can't read or speak English, but again, they're the top dogs in our community. They're the ones who needs to be here. They're the ones who need communication-wise. They're the ones that we have to accommodate, and we want them here.
How do we get the people in the chairs? I'm really struggling with, you know, what are the action items? What can this committee do to do the community outreach, to get the people in the chairs?
One of the functions should be to hold an event that welcomes people to come participate. It would be very beneficial for us to hold an event outside this room.
I was thinking what you also said, instead of having them necessarily come here in this forum, why don't we go where the people are at and have listening sessions? Going to the Mong Americans and/or any place, we alternate the times, alternate the days, and go and have a listening session. Then we can also offer it, you know, partially on Zoom, in person, so like kind of mix it up a little bit and brainstorm those ideas.
So, before opening up the floor for Mr. Norfleet and Ms. Campbell to inject some comments, I just wanted to note from the video, as you'll see in your report, that there were some themes or motifs that the committee wanted to focus on. And I think one of the things that was unanimous is, as a committee, we did not want to kind of arbitrarily and utilaterally define some of these things for the community in terms of what needs may be and, you know, what barriers to inequality or inclusion should be. So, there was a desire really to have future community engagement, and one of the suggested approaches was to have events both kind of onsite here, but as well as in the public. So, I'll just open it up now to comments from Ms. Campbell and Mr. Norfleet.
Hi, this is Latanya. First, thank you guys for taking the opportunity to listen to us. Thank you, Tom, for doing that presentation and showing the video. I think this is just, you know, since I started on this committee when Milky was in office, we've been able to accomplish a couple of different things, but I think that we can accomplish a whole lot more, and I think we can accomplish that together if we're on the same page. So, I love the idea of coming and talking to you and presenting our ideas, so that we can be on the same page. I think that it will be beneficial to the community as a whole, especially with having new folks come into the community and just trying to get on the same page. There was a lot of uproar with the Community for All Resolution and brought a lot of negative attention to our community, and I think this is a way that it can bring people together and start bridging some of those conversations, so that everyone does feel welcome and included and accepted here in the community. So, again, I just want to take the time to say thank you for listening. Thank you for all the service that you do and the things that you do to build this community up. Chris, did you want to add anything?
Yes, can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, good evening. Like Latanya said, I want to just reinforce both ideas, that now we want to engage in activities that are going to create more of a partnership than a sense of dependency. And so, now we want to go to the community and find out what they feel and speak to them on their turf about their own issues, opposed to trying to think of what they're feeling and what they want. Ultimately, I believe we have an opportunity to make part of everybody. That should be the common goal, to make sure that everybody feels understood and that they have an opportunity to participate inside the council room and outside as well, because at the end of the day, we're all still citizens as well. So, I appreciate that we're moving forward on this, and hopefully, we'll be bringing more concrete ideas to fruition in the future. Thank you.
Great, and we'll just open it up to any questions or potential questions in a moment, but I just wanted to also refer back to that resolution, and so I can share with the council kind of some of the good work that has been done by the committee. And I'll tell you, all the citizen volunteers have worked really hard, so I thank them for that. And, for example, with discussions recently on refugee language needs, the committee had the very positive, unique opportunity to invite the former ESL Director from the Wausau School District, who was a real leader in language education and so forth, and had a wealth of knowledge to share with us. And also, if you look at the list of segments that the resolution covers, the committee really intends to be comprehensive. So, you'll notice even veterans and veteran status. And as the committee works with refugee matters, we'd also like to initiate discussions in the committee that perhaps would be forwarded to standing committees on veteran reentry needs, as well as any potential related assessments on needs for reentry. So, I think these are things that can fit very well together, and just as you saw from the video, where the committee hopes to work closely with the community, I think we'd really like to work closely with the council and to have your support. So, if there are any questions.
I guess if anybody has, oh, yes, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I guess just a comment. I like the fact that your plan is to journey out into the community to gauge what people want and what their expectations are. I think anytime we've hosted an event here and we've asked people to take time out of their day and come to City Hall, where, you know, we all pretty much live, the attendance is historically low. Whether we have public engagement meetings or public information sessions, you'll have a few people, but you never have a robust enough crowd to really gauge what a large number of people want to see. And I think whenever we've tried to conduct, you know, focus groups or gather input, sometimes it's better to go where people are versus bring them here. So, I do like that. I think that as part of that information gathering, it is really helpful for us if we can articulate where we fit as municipal policymakers. So, you know, when we go out in the community and people tell us what they want to see happen or what they want to be different, we have to figure out, using the tools that we have here as a city, whether we can solve it or whether we have to engage other partners into the solution, because sometimes we don't have the tools, even if we have good intentions. So, I think if we gather the appropriate people around the right table, we can get good results, but sometimes we can't solve it alone. So, I think it helps to identify what our real role is. Is it solutions or is it coordination? So, but a good start, though.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm really excited about this. Thank you very much for kind of getting us on this track. I know it's been a bumpy ride for us, and we've had some turnover in the committee, too. I think we really have an opportunity to be strategic in our approach, and this is going to be part of it. I mean, I'm hearing from people that are excited, so I'm ready.
Well, great, thank you very much. And I'd also like to extend my thanks to Ms. Frankel, who has done, helped with committee work, as well as Public Access, who produced those Public Access videos we use, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is public comment. This is for pre-registered citizens for matters appearing on the agenda, another public comment. I'm told we don't have anybody who signed up, so we won't have any of that. The next item is our consent agenda. That is file number 220101 through file number 220112. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Wadenski and a second by Watson. Any discussion? Okay, the clerk will call the roll.
Do you have a comment?
Oh, we do have a comment. Alder Killian, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And sorry, I just sat down.
Oh, no problem.
Are we discussing the consent agenda?
Yes.
Would it be possible to pull the relocation order for the trail for discussion?
Remind me what number that is.
One moment.
That's 210413. Okay, yep, we will pull that one out, so we will talk about everything, or we'll vote on everything except for that. Anyone else have any comments or needs? Otherwise, I think we're ready to vote on the consent agenda. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElaney?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. We are now on file number 210413. This is a joint resolution from CISM and Plan Commission approving the relocation order for establishing a multi-use trail along 72nd Avenue from Packer Drive to International Drive. I would entertain a motion, maybe before we have discussion. I have a motion by Larson and a second by Rasmussen. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had earlier today also inquired with the city attorney about this, just because I had seen that this relocation order is necessary to begin negotiations, apparently, but it also lists as a possibility then eminent domain as a component of the possibilities if we go this direction. So, you know, I'm a little concerned about that, and just obviously, given past history on Thomas Street with the threat of eminent domain, it's not something I'm very fond of. So, would there be a way to initiate negotiations with property owners, and perhaps this is a question for the city attorney, without having eminent domain on the table out of the gate?
I am going to maybe have the city attorney address this.
I can tell you from past experience on Thomas Street that you're not always required to follow eminent domain, but if you do, you are, it is open to you to elect to follow the state statutes, and once a council agrees to do that, then they must follow through on the entire process. My curiosity about this, because I don't know much about this project, and I don't see a map attached to the relocation order, at least it wasn't in my packet. I've seen a description of multi-use trail, as well as new trail, and I've seen a reference in the resolution to 3205 and 3207. It's throughout the resolution is the eminent domain statutes. So, I don't know why they're starting down this road necessarily, or if they'd thought about other options short of following eminent domain, but it appears that's what you're being asked to approve tonight, is a relocation order, which is the first step then under Chapter 3205, to begin negotiations with the property owners, after which you're going to have to get an appraisal. If they don't like it, you're going to pay for two appraisals, and make jurisdictional offers, you're going to go all the way down that road. But in 2017, the legislature passed Statute 32.05, and that says property may not be acquired by condemnation to establish or extend a recreational trail, a bicycle way, a bicycle path, or lane, or a pedestrian way. So, factually, I don't know enough about the trail that they've planned, and I haven't seen a map of it to know whether or not that's legally permissible.
Thank you. So, might it be possible, if my colleagues are comfortable with it as well, might it be possible to get confirmation on whether eminent domain is even applicable to this type of trail? And if it turns out to not be, and that would be removed moving forward, that might alleviate, I think, some concerns. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a map. I've handed it over to the city attorney. If you don't mind, I'll call on Alder Rasmussen, and maybe there's some insight.
Sure. So, we had actually asked about this in CISM as well, because as we furthered the trail, they're not forced land takings, they're easements, and a lot of it had to do with land grading and regrading once the trail is put in. So, I don't know if we have either the city engineer or the public works director on WebEx tonight, but they had a definitive explanation for the construction of the trail, and the relocation order process really is just a vehicle by which they are securing basically 10 easements, six of which are temporary, and once the trail is done, they go away. So, they were not intending to forcibly take land from anybody, but they do need access to fix things back to dovetail properly on the utility and on the grading side, I guess, is what we had heard from Eric.
Well, that's still an interest in land, and we have acquired TLEs and permanent easements through condemnation before as well. So, it doesn't have to be a fee, simple taking.
Right. The indication from them was that people would be paid for them based on the size of the easement and whatnot. That's why he showed the anticipated $1,000 to $5,000 impact, but, you know, there didn't seem to be any opposition to this, at least when we discussed it in CISM. So, you know, we could defer, until we have Eric or Allen available
Yeah.
to consult with the council, we could defer action. I don't believe they're on a tight timeline. I mean, if we need more information, if they're not on tonight, we could just take this next time.
And we could get in the next meeting. So, it is correct. There are some conflicting appointments tonight that did not allow them to join us. We can get that information. I'm asking, trying to figure out if there's urgency to this request.
I know there was, because they wanted to get an order for recording right away in the morning, like there was some sort of deadline.
Okay.
I don't know anything about it.
I know, and we don't have Brad.
I didn't draft a resolution, I don't know.
Okay, Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, that question is brought up. IO2 is almost a victim of eminent domain, and as much as I voted for this on CISM, I think maybe I'm going to get some cold feet on this, and I would go along with Alder Rasmussen to maybe put this on hold until we see a more definitive map and before, you know, so we can see a more definitive map and so that eminent domain won't be a factor here. Thank you.
Alder McElaney.
I'm going to make a motion to refer this back to CISM Committee to get clarification. I also would like with that motion to have the city attorney involved, since there has been, the chapter has been into this resolution regarding eminent domain. I don't think there's enough knowledge for me to vote on it. I will vote no if it does, if this motion to refer back doesn't pass. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to refer this back to CISM with additional oversight from the city attorney. Is there, I have a second by Killian. Any further discussion on this? Yes, Alder Rasmussen.
Just a question on the, a procedural question. When it left CISM, at least based on the explanation that we got from engineering, it didn't sound like it needed any additional work from the committee, and so referring it to committee basically adds a good month of delay. So, if we were to table this item to the next council meeting and wait until we have Eric Lindman and his team with us, we might be able to make that decision at the next council meeting, rather than add more delay.
Okay.
Would you be amenable to at least putting it on the table until the first meeting of February, and if you don't get the information you want then, then refer it to CISM, because that meets that same week?
Okay, I guess they have a, what do you think, Alder McElaney?
I'm okay with that, as long as we still have the provision that the city attorney's office is involved.
Okay, what do you think, Alder Killian?
Sounds good. I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so we then have a motion to table this until our next meeting in two weeks, and we'll have oversight with the city attorney and more insights from both our public works director and city engineer. Sound good? Oh, we got it, we have a motion in a second, so we're good there. Any other discussion here? Okay, I will let the clerk call the roll then. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElaney?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. We will talk about this in two weeks. All righty, the next item on our agenda is confirmation of mayor's appointments. Today, that is Rob Shepard being reappointed to the Business Improvement District Board. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Neil and a second by Watson. Any discussion? Not seeing any. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElaney?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We are now on to file number 211107. It's a resolution from CISM approving the creation of a Sessors Platte for 901 Townline Road, 1309 Torney Avenue, 1315 Torney Avenue, and 1321 Torney Avenue. I have a motion by Wadenski and a second by Rasmussen. Any discussion here? Seeing anybody with a request to speak? Okay, Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElaney?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
That was an "I," right?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. All right, here is where I'm going to ask to suspend the rules. Six B filing, this does require two-thirds vote majority. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Herbst and a second by Watson. We'll just vote on that, you don't get to talk about it. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElaney?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
Motion passes 10 to 1. All righty, rules are suspended. We are now on to file number 220111. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving application for a CDI grant through WEDC for the Children's Imaginarium. This just passed Finance, 4 to 1. I guess I'm looking for a motion. I have a motion by Rasmussen and a second by Herbst. Any discussion? Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Just an update from the Finance Committee, since this item is new. It is a grant application for WEDC funding for the Imaginarium, and the city would really just be a flow-through for those funding, for that funding and helping them with that grant process. It would not be using levy dollars, just to clarify.
Okay, thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of questions and comments. Since we're essentially dealing with the mall site, what degree of involvement or oversight does WAWS have on this matter, as could perhaps the Economic Development Director address that?
I would love it if Liz had some insight. Thank you.
Gladly, yes. This is a development that's occurring in a home building, which is separately owned, so they don't have any, WAWS does not have involvement in this project.
Thank you. And I do have further questions that may be relevant to you. So, in the design drawings that we saw of the overall mall location, which had some existing sites on them like Home, but there were kind of design sketches of the totality of the site. Who put those together?
Gosh, the totality of this site? I know we're working with tool design for the streets, and I am not remembering the contracting firm that's doing, I think, I'm sorry, I don't remember who's putting together the rest of the renderings for the blocks and public areas.
That's okay. I think I had raised some questions about the fancy curvy bridge there, and when that had come up for the Neighborhood Investment Fund program, I think those were WAWS drawings. I don't know who put them together, but they were for WAWS, I believe.
That's correct, and those are from two different firms.
UD?
Yeah, I know, there's, we work with a few, so I'm trying to remember. I could pull up the information on my email if you would like me to.
And we don't have to get that granular. I think just the fact that they were for WAWS, I think, will suffice. And I guess with this, because it's public dollars, one concern I had this is a state grant funding, correct? And so we have Mr. Gidorzi as the managing director and on the WAWS board. And I saw on the resolution that Gidorzi Construction would be contracted for the construction. So I guess I'm a little worried that there doesn't seem to be much daylight between the overall planning body of that site and the construction company that's being contracted to do this. Are there any details, since it's public dollars, on anything? Any nuances on self-dealing or conflict of interest?
No, because this is the home building, so this is separately owned. So this does not have to do with WAWS. WAWS... Because the Children's Imaginarium is contracting with Gidorzi Construction. It is not WAWS contracting with Gidorzi Construction. So there is no, you know, the city doesn't really have a spot in the private dealings of two private entities to say who they can and cannot contract with. This is not a WAWS to Gidorzi deal.
Thank you, and some of that feels like a distinction without a difference. And what the city does have the ability to do, and I think why we're sitting here and what people expect us to do is to vote on these matters. And I think that's a little too close for comfort for me as the district alderperson, so I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, I think we're ready to vote. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
No.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
McElhany? Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
Motion passes 92. Okay, thank you very much. We are now on to our next item. It's file number 150708. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving a second amendment to the Development Agreement, the Second Amendment to the Real Estate Mortgage, and the First Amendment to the Real Estate Mortgage Subordination Agreement for Riverlife Wausau LLC Phase 1. This did pass Finance tonight 4 to 1. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Rasmussen, and I have a second by Herbst. Any discussion? Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you, just an update on this one from the committee as well. We had discussed this, and this actually frees up some capital stack financing for the developer and, you know, subordinates our position, but then also allows them access to financing and capital. So that's why we supported that one.
Okay, thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Alder Rasmussen kind of filled in some blanks for me there. I was just going to ask the city attorney if, by kind of moving us farther down the back of the line as kind of a creditor or what have you, does that place any additional risk on the city financially? Thank you.
I can't really speak from a financial standpoint. I see from the resolution that we loaned them $242,232.50. They gave us a mortgage and a security agreement and an assignment of rents. And originally, as you saw under the Development Agreement, the amount that would be superior to our mortgage, we had agreed at that time would not exceed $8.5 million. You are now being asked to approve the amount that would be superior to our mortgage, up to $11 million. Does that put us in a worse position? Worse probably isn't the right word, but yes, it moves us down a little. We're still in second place, but it makes... It just increases the amount that's superior to our mortgage by $2.5 million. Now, whether that impacts their ability to repay the amount they owe the city, I don't know what the repayment terms are, I don't know. I don't have any other financial information on that. So does it add risk? Maybe a tiny bit, only because it's making us more junior to their superior lien position by another $2.5 million.
Thank you.
I don't know if we have anyone online that knows more than you about this. Oh, Mary Ann, if you have anything to add that maybe we missed?
No, just that I don't believe that we're going to be repaid that loan, that that's a forgivable loan.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I think we're ready to vote. The clerk will call. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we are now on to our second opportunity for folks for public comment and suggestions. If you're here and you didn't sign up to speak, you can speak now. Otherwise, we're moving on. Oh, we have somebody. If you could say your name and address for the record.
Doug Denny, Wausau. Since we didn't use up a lot of time today, I'll just... I'll file this under light-hearted suggestions. Pat, I hope Pat, you're still here, Pat Peckham. We have Pat and Tom, Neil, my aldermen retiring at the end of this term. So I hope we find an appropriate send-off for them with a cake on their last meeting, and maybe we can invite the public to come in and give an appropriate roast for these gentlemen. I've had an opportunity to roast my neighbor, Tom Neil, over the years. And he's always been very, very gracious. And sometimes I had to pull out the dictionary to read his emails to me. But we had a lot of fun over the years. Thanks, Tom, and thanks, Pat. See ya.
Thank you. I am also in favor of cake, so whoever's planning this. All righty, so I guess I need somebody from our body here to make a motion and read all this stuff.
All right, I'll volunteer.
Alder Rasmussen.
I'll move that we go into closed session pursuant to chapter 19.85, paragraph 1, sub F,